Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a report from Finance Committee Chair Pell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From the Finance and Facilities Committee, we met on February 13th. Members present was myself and Linda. In addition, from the College were President Jordan, Susan Rogers, Adam Rothman, Scott Schnackenberg, and Joya Ponticello. Summary, Adam started the meeting with an update on the college strategic priorities. He reviewed financial obligations, unanticipated costs, strategic priorities, salary savings, and revitalization funds. The committee reviewed three resolutions that will be brought forward to the full board, including the resolution to purchase a regional jet, the purchase of computers to upgrade the labs through the college's fund balance, and the resolution to enter into agreements to purchase services with Economic Modeling LLC. The committee received a budget update, including discussion about short-term investments and a PSO request for an ad hoc budget committee. The committee discussed ideas for a new slogan, mission, core value statement, and reviewed the institutional priorities proposed as part of the college strategic plan. Dr. Jordan provided the committee with a preliminary timeline for completion of the strategic plan and the date in which the final plan will be presented to the full board on March 28, 2023. The meeting closed with informational updates on middle states, recent impending claims against the college, the CIO position, enrollment numbers for spring and fall, the successful visit by Chancellor King, and the upcoming board retreat. And just a side note, I hope for those of you that did have the pleasure of meeting Chancellor King, it was very proud. I know that many of us did, and some of those of you in the audience had an opportunity to meet Chancellor King. I've known him for a very long time. He is very, very committed to what matters for our young people in the state of New York, and it was an honor and a privilege to have him here at our campus. I yield back to you, Mr. Chairman.
I agree. That was a great privilege. And are there any questions of Chair Pell or Finance? Okay, there being none, then the next item on the agenda is liaison report versus DCC Foundation. Trustee Castella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the trustee folder, you'll find several items, including an invitation to the gala, which I've already gotten my tickets to. I hope you have as well. The Foundation College Annual Report, as well as a save the date and invitation for the Handel Foundation Greenspan Trust event that is coming up. In addition, the foundation, in partnership with the community foundations of the Hudson Valley, has acquired a new donor who came to visit. Diana introduced him to the DCC cares team and the pantry, and he's made a $26,000 gift to DCC cares. The foundation's celebration of giving event, presented by Whitney Morris, state-registered nurse in DCC cares, was a success. I do have some remarks that I can pass around, so that way you can review those. As a result of the celebration of giving event, Whitney was also asked to speak at the Millbrook Rotary Meeting, and the foundation made several contacts who are considering giving gifts to DCC cares. Whitney also will present at the gala coming up. The foundation received a clean audit, which will go to the foundation board meeting on March 10. The DCC Foundation Honors Convocation Luncheon will be reinstated with a formal invitation and additional details to follow. And I do want to thank Diana for presenting to our youth leadership students as well. They are here on campus again tonight.
Thank you, Frank. Any questions for him?
If there are none, the next item is the DCC Association. That would be me as the liaison, and I have no report because we'll be meeting on March 20. However, today, we did have a meeting, a subset of us, with the same group that we had met with, that are potential property managers, I'll call it, of the dormitory. We fleshed out some more details. There'll still be some more discussion forthcoming at that at the association meeting. But in essence, it's an opportunity for us to offload some of the management issues there. But there's also, I think those gathered today thought that there might be some still questions as to whether or not this particular company is the best fit with our campus and given the needs of our students. Anybody have any questions?
That brings us up to the educational presentation.
So allow me to introduce the trustee, and Rosa is a member of the college's IR department. This presentation should be interesting, following our board retreat a couple, feels like a couple of weekends ago. I remember its note. But this is a presentation that speaks to how we might use data as part of the work that we do and how we can create dashboards to facilitate the kind of culture of evidence that we want to continue to grow at DCC.
So Rosa, you are ready.
Thank you, Dr. Jordan, for the introduction. Allow me a minute to just log in.
Take your time. Don't worry.
It should be all voted now. Good evening, everybody. As Dr. Jordan said, my name is Rosa Pichili. I work in institutional research office as a grants and institutional research analyst. I will start my presentation today by asking you a question. Has anyone here heard of a term VUCA, or that we live in a VUCA world? V U C A? Well, I myself recently learned about it in a class I'm taking called Decision Support System. VUCA stands for volatile, ambiguous, complex, and uncertain, sorry, complex and ambiguous. And that is a world we live in and need to make decisions in, sometimes with missing information, sometimes quickly and have to adapt quickly. So the tool that I will show you today, and one of the projects we're adopting in our office, is designed to help decision-makers to make decisions with most information that's available and that presents data in a way that are easy to understand, consume, and use. Higher education should rely on data-driven decision-making, as we all know. Recently, the National Association of Colleges and Universities, of college and university business officers, jointly with Association for Institutional Research and EDUCcause, which is a non-profit organization for use of IT and new technologies in higher education, issued a statement, joint statement, where they together stand together with a strong sense of urgency to reaffirm higher education's commitment to use of data and analytics to make better strategic decisions. Another purpose of this project is data democratization. As Martin Schneider, our colleague at the college director of grant, recently told me, data is power. And continuing this thought further, I'd say data, power needs to be shared. Tools like this will show, will help us to contribute to sense of transparency and empowerment at the college. So let me demonstrate a couple of such tools and dashboards that Dr. Jordan referred to. I will show you three. One is on enrollment and demographics of students at the college. Data for this particular dashboard come from SUNY Warehouse, SUNY Business Intelligence Data Warehouse. So here we have, is it clearly visible to everyone? Could be a little small. But there are several tabs in this report, such as student profile. It's a snapshot of student enrollment at any given time, point in time in the semester, in particular term, and we can go back as far as 20 years ago and see who enrolled at Duchess. So we have information on students, whether they were male, female, Pell eligible or not, full-time, part-time, the age of students, adults, or traditional age students, further broken down by smaller categories of ages, such as under 18, 18 to 19, and so forth. Types of students or type of enrollment, admissions, how they entered, whether they were first time, transfer students, or they're continuing in that term, and race ethnicity. We can look at total headcount of students and credit hours. So this is for DCC, meaning students who are at the college, excluding, sorry, high school programs, because they vary by demographics, somewhat considered separate groups. Second tab will have the same information on high school students, concurrent and early admit, those who come to Duchess while still enrolled in high school. We can filter on this page by how we would like to view our students. Perhaps if it's a program chair or a department chair looking at this information, want to make improvements to their program and see where the students are, they can pick their program. For example, we have a new program of aviation maintenance. We could see who is enrolling, how many, how the program is growing, and so forth. We can look at special demographics of students, such as students with disabilities, first generation, military, economically disadvantaged groups. Then we can also look at students by programs. For example, here we have graph of programs, students with most enrollment. So in the last full 2022 term, by far the largest program is general studies program. So students enroll that the most, followed by business administration, transfer, liberal arts and humanities, human services, and a science program, and so forth. It's further broken down by demographics. So for example, if we wanted to look at race, ethnic composition of programs, we could further break it down, by race ethnicity for each program, or by age, if we wanted to track down what the adult student enrollment is, that is shown in the age column, which could also be broken down by smaller groups. We could also see where our new students are coming from. So if students entered as first-time high school students, we will see what high school they are from. So in this last term, last full term, we had Arlington High Schools represented most, followed by, oops, that's sorted improperly, there Arlington, RC Ketchum, and John Jay. If students came in as transfer students, this will show what college they came from. So this might assist in developing recruitment efforts. And finally, last tab here are the trends, where we can look at progression of time from 2002 to now, or narrow it down if we wanted to look at the last 10 years, five years, or any given time in between. We could look at all students or high school versus not. The two lines are actually comparing the DCC headcount, which exclude high school enrollment, and the bottom line is the high school enrollment. So we see a clear trend of how they are about to meet, emerge soon. And further down below here, we could also look at, I'm going to just switch to Duchess in-house enrollment, and see changes in programs, or how age has been changing between any year. Let's say we look at the last, maybe in the last 10 years, 2012, that was the peak of enrollment. So we will see the percent change in numbers of students by each program. So overall, with 52% decline. Or by race ethnicity, compare the proportional change of, say, between white students, where there's a 15% decline, whereas for Hispanic and Latina students, there has been an 8% increase in that group. So that's a quick demonstration of the enrollment dashboard. This particular dashboard and report is posted online. It's open access information. If anyone is interested, perhaps we can distribute a link to this, so anyone could play with it and see if there are any insights, or further inquiries, really. This, I think this tool is great because it allows any user to try around and generate some thoughts and further inquiries to further investigate what is seen, and see, look into causes perhaps a little bit more. Does anyone have any questions about this before I go into the next one?
Just really a comment. You mentioned how important data is, and so full disclosure, I work for a company that data is very important for us to make informed decisions. So I really like the context of this tool, of how you can kind of parse out different elements of it that can help us make those decisions as we move forward, particularly on enrollment, something we have been talking about for quite some time, of where are those gaps, and what can we do to improve upon that. So I think this data is very powerful. So thank you for that.
Thank you for that comment.
So on the same note, how is your office using this data to increase our enrollment?
Well, I would say our office is servicing, at this point, decision-makers to inform and educate everyone at the college. So we're building it. We're building it to create, and we are analyzing it. We generate further queries and receive requests from other offices to answer more detailed questions. When I get to one, I can give you an example for course success, perhaps.
So one example, and Scott can jump in here as well, but one example is you saw the trend line with high school concurrent enrollment. And what that says to us is that we need to pay attention to that because it's not necessarily going to change. And the report I mentioned earlier says the same thing. So then we have to start looking at, you know, what are the kinds of things that we can do, or that we may be doing currently that isn't helping to grow that portion of our student body. So that's one example.
This doesn't come from this one in particular, but another manipulation of data shows that we have over the last five years, about 1,000 students who haven't graduated have earned over 50 credits here. They've not gone somewhere else or graduated somewhere else. We try to get back, so we have the names of those students.
That's a great example, yeah.
So that's an excellent example. That's an involvement kind of example that we're working on, hopefully bring them back.
So that's something that you're rolling out right now? That's awesome. I mean, that is a great group of students that, you know, have a lot at their age.
We'll try to show them the best way, whether it's under the catalog they came in on, or under the current catalog, we'll try to show them the shortest way.
That's pretty powerful, actually, when you think about the importance of data on that particular example, Scott. So thank you for sharing that.
On a more banal level, but equally important, before we had this level sophistication in our data, we were already noticing that white students were declining. This is before Scott was hired, and Latinos were increasing. So we went out and hired a bilingual recruiter, which is something we should have had already, because that is a growth population for us. So data can define, help lots of decision-making.
This reminded me of a personal story, so I can share. When I worked in one of the roles here at the college previously, I had, after working with students and seeing some arbitrary experiences and realizing, you know what, we could do this this way, or change something, I came up with this idea that I wanted to present to my manager. But to do so, my manager valued data as well, and they asked that, in God, I trust, but everyone else, bring me data. So I had to go on, without access to anything like this, not working in IR office where I can easily pull things together and find out the answers, I had to go on a quest of trying to obtain this information, which was very difficult. With something like this, anyone who works at the college or doesn't, and can generate some thoughts, ideas, justify their ideas, proposals, so it's a great empowerment tool as well.
Thank you.
The second report I would like to share is on course success. This one isn't shared yet publicly. It's in progress, but this is the stage it's in. Let me show you. So this basically will show us how our students are doing in terms of passing courses. Passing here is defined as earning a C or better. So we can again, break it down by demographics. But first, overall, we can look at, say, a department chair wants to evaluate their class's performance and how courses are taught, in an online format, in a full semester-long format, in a shorter format, and how students are doing based on all those variables. So one could pick a department to look at all the classes and average pass rate, for example, in allied health and biological sciences department, over the last 10 years was 73%. In business, aviation, and construction, 72%. We could also look at specific courses. So some courses we call gateway courses, because students have to pass them to move on and really get started in their careers, in their education. So some of the English math courses are reviewed as gateway courses. So for English, if we were to look at English 101 and 102, we would know that students are passing at 64% rate on average. Now, if we wanted to look at students by student type, how continuing students are doing versus new students, well, in English, most likely it's new student for English 101. How students are doing, based on whether the course is online or not. And here, since it's a really new, developing, and growing area for courses, there's a specific graph that will show us and help compare side by side that. Yeah, I'd have to adjust formatting here a little. But the height of bars is the enrollment. Light blue is in-person, darker blue is online. And we can see how the trend has changed in the last COVID years especially. And then the lines, I'm actually going back to this size, because I think it looks better. So the lines are pass rates for online students are orange, and purple is the pass rate for in-person students. There was a time there was a gap when we didn't have during COVID, a couple of semesters, we did not have in-person classes, so that's the gap. But as population has, as enrollment in online courses have grown, the pass rates have shifted. If we look, we can also look at courses that are taught concurrently at high schools, and it's a growing number of courses. We will see pass rates a lot higher. Most high school students pass. We can see pass rates by schools as well, all 21 local schools that we offered at, and how they compare between each other. Further, let me just move the filters. Further, the goal here is to provide each department at the college with their own analytics tool, and there are pages, there are tabs for each department that will only give them their courses. But for higher-level administration, perhaps, or maybe general college population, we can look at the detailed view by demographics of students as well. So some of you mentioned tabs in performance of students based on race ethnicity, their status. We could look at how underrepresented minority groups are doing versus non-underrepresented minority groups. So if we wanted to look at performance of Hispanic, Latino, or Black and African-American students, where historically we've seen underperformance, and design initiatives to help them track the progress, tools like this could be used as well. So I think the line went down a bit, 58. Yeah, it was 58% for the two groups, for Black, African-American, and Hispanic groups, whereas overall, average for everybody, 65% in this last term, for all courses. Closer look, or a different view, is given here with the two lines comparing non-underrepresented groups, this light blue and underrepresented minority groups in green. And we can compare side by side performance of students based on, this again, race ethnicity, age, where students, on average, over the last two years, sorry, 10 years for all courses, adult students are passing courses at 75% rate versus traditional students, 68%. Males, females, where females are passing at 72%, males 65. Pell Grant recipients or not, Pell Grant recipients, somewhat 68% versus 70% for those who do not receive Pell assistance. And finally, first-generation students, seem to be pretty comparable. Something to keep in mind, the, Scott, please correct me if this is incorrect, inaccurate, but the proportion, we might not get everyone accurately reported as first-generation college students, depending on how we collect information, and where students are not forced always to answer those questions. So we might not have. Yeah, for example, if I click on Pell, yes, the data will only show, hmm. Yes, I think around 2014, 15, SUNY as a system improved their data collection efforts for those specific demographics, demographic variables. So we will also be looking in terms of student performance, at creating graphs and, you know, dashboards based on retention, graduation, so metrics like that. The last thing I will show you is a, iPad. We can compare ourselves to other colleges by using data from iPads, which is Integrated Post-Secondary Education Data System, where all hundreds, thousands, all colleges in America are supposed to submit their information to. There's a little bit of a lag in between submission periods, so it's not last term available, it's a year behind. But, sorry. So for enrollment, for example, we'll see, we can create customized comparisons groups, in which case, there are five local, nearing, similar in size SUNY community schools, SUNY community colleges, Orange, Rockland, Ulster, and Westchester. So if we compare them, full 2021 is the last available term that we can get. At Duchess, we had 7,222 students, whereas average for the comparison group was under 6,000. And we could look at each school individually, where we follow Westchester's lead with 9,000 students. The information on the iPad's website is broken down by, for this particular enrollment dashboard, by sex, men, women, level of students, whether new undergraduate or continuing, and based on race ethnicity. So similar dashboards comparing our college to other peers, I can't call us competitors, we're all serving the same mission, working on the same goal. But based on, we can compare human resources data, finance data, retention, graduation, and many other things that get reported to National Center for Educational Statistics. So this was the last present, the last dashboard I wanted to share with you, and I welcome any questions.
Are there any questions from the right?
I'm sorry?
I'm starting from the right. Amina? Yes?
So what you had showed before, where it should be rates, like, say it again, like the achievement.
Pass rate?
Course success?
Course, yes, yes.
Based off of gender, ethnicity, is there, like, any way to see that based off of students, like, finances, where they're at right now financially, whether they're disadvantaged or not? Because I definitely think that has, like, a lot to do with how they, you know, succeed or don't in school.
Yeah. Pell Grant eligibility is one factor that we may take into account. There's a few other criteria we can look at. Yes, I'm thinking of places where we can gather this data, and on SUNY's website, we can download information based on economically disadvantaged criteria, which is a factor that is composed of many different things. So yes, to an extent. As far as, as much as can be reported and collected, we can analyze it that way.
Linda, questions? Evis?
No.
Steven? Angela? Sheila?
No, just again, a comment that this is really powerful information for us to be able to make informed decisions. So I very much appreciate that and the work that's being done. So thank you.
Frank, do you have any questions?
No, agreed. I think the marketing department can go to town on this one. I have a question.
Yes.
Being the luddite up here and the old person, are you training department heads and people who work here to utilize all this data? Because that was a blur for me, honestly.
It's easier when you're self-doing it. It's, you know, you click, you figure things out. But yes, we are educating people. We did a presentation at the, teaching it through a workshop, that Teaching and Learning Service Center, sorry, entity at the college had put together, I presented at that. But yes, the goal is to make it available and teach people to, how to use it and how to interpret it. Yes.
The reason why I ask is you reminded me of the young people when they come over and say, just let me fix that, and da-da-da-da, and it's done. You kind of need to walk old people through this, step by step. Nothing works, nothing helps. Nothing works, nothing helps, like, hands-on experience by going through that, so that's my, that was my only thought.
Yes, we have done some, we are just starting, this is very new, I'm sorry.
Finish your thought.
Yeah, that's our goal. That's our goal, we will be doing that.
And in the interest of fairness, I did give Rosa a time limit, so she, she used it well.
Thank you, Rosa, very much. And yes, I will echo what everybody else is thinking up here, which is, the data is great to see and have, and if we can actually have all our employees, not all, but if we can have employees utilize this, I think that moves the college forward in every possible way.
Well, one that I thought of, Diana, is, you know, how the foundation can take some of this information and, you know, leverage it as you're out, you know, recruiting more funding for the college, right? And areas where folks would be very interested in some of those data points, right, that might maximize, particularly for those underrepresented, right? There are clearly people out there that are very altruistic in wanting to give in those areas, right? So this is a great way for you to be able to not only have that conversation, but to have data to back it up with some of those funders, so, yeah.
Yes, we hope to assist other offices with use of data and utilizing these tools as well.
Just one, one last question. You had said that the dashboard for enrollment was public now. The course success dashboard, will that go public, or is it going to stay in-house? And if it is going to go public, when?
Subject to discussion. We haven't made a decision yet. In a very aggregated way, possibly, but most likely internally.
Yeah, it seems like, yeah. Okay, thank you.
I think internal, I think you want to be careful of that.
Yeah.
That makes us all feel better.
Yeah, thank you.
So again, I thought this presentation would be an important presentation following the conversation we had at the retreat, the board retreat regarding key performance indicators, to really demonstrate for members of the board that we do have tools available to us to really capture data and to use it effectively. So, thank you, Rosa, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Rose and Scott. And there being no other items on the agenda, we'll take a seven-minute break and reconvene at seven PM. Thank you.
Some nice comments.
Thank you, everyone. I'm counting meeting to order at seven o'clock. Ms. Andrews, can you please call the roll?
Sheila Pell.
Present.
Steven Haswell.
Present.
Frank Costella.
Present.
Dara Cloud. Michael Dupree.
Present.
Angela Fleslin.
Present.
Lisa Gardi. Ebis Guzman.
Present.
Linda Pratt.
Present.
Amina Augustin Mohammed.
Present.
We have four.
Thank you. And for once, everyone said present, no here's. Wow. Make it a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved. Sheila.
Second, Angela.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Thank you. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes of our meeting held January 24th, 2023?
Yes.
Make it a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved. Sheila.
Second, Ebis.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I skipped over because there's a reason, public comment. I will note that there was no public comment. No one signed up for the comment period. This is becoming a tradition. Whether that's good or it's bad, I'm not sure which. Committee reports are next. And tonight, we will have under Academic and Student Affairs, trustee Augustin Mohammed.
Hello. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas the PSO met on January 26th, 2003, and voted unanimously on a resolution to make PSO remarks a regular item on Board of Trustees Academic and Student Affairs Committee meeting agenda. Whereas continued open communication will help support the vision, mission, and values of the College now, therefore be it resolved that the Board hereby adopts this resolution, inviting the PSO chair or designee to address the Board's Academic and Student Affairs Committee at least one per semester, once per semester, in effort to better communication. Is there a second?
Second, Frank.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Amina, and also thanks to the PSO, to the professional staff organization for providing the input on this in the first place. I should have added at the very beginning that all the items, all the resolutions are discussed during committees, during committee meetings in advance, as well as briefly doing the workshop. Next item is board policy. Ebis Guzman is chair.
The board policy committee met. It was attended by everyone in the group on February 8th, 2023. The meeting opened with a discussion on the board policy schedule. We looked at all of the policies needing review in 2023, and we've discussed and came up with a plan to tackle the list and present the updates back to the Board. Dr. Jordan also presented ideas for new slogan, mission, core values, and statement. Then we also went over the Middle States update, and went over the pending claims against the College concurrent enrollment. And we capped a successful chancellor's visit to DCC. And a little bit about the upcoming board retreat that is now complete.
Thank you, Ebis. Anybody have any questions for Chair Guzman on board policy?
Exciting policies.
But necessary, but necessary.
Absolutely necessary.
Besides that, as we learned, policy is important. The policy of policymaking is important from our retreat. The next item on the agenda is Finance and Facilities Committee chaired by Sheila Pell, trustee Pell.
Thank you, and I thank my colleagues Linda and Steve as members and the faculty that has joined us time and time again when we've had our committee meetings, last being February 13th. I bring forward three resolutions. First is 2023-12. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas bids were duly advertised and requested for an aviation maintenance technician training Learjet aircraft or equivalent, and whereas one bid was received as a result of the solicitation and was publicly opened and read aloud at 2:30 PM on February 2nd, 2023. And whereas the vendor provided pricing as shown on the tabulation sheet attached to this resolution, and whereas funds for aviation maintenance technician training Learjet aircraft will be made available through grant funding, now therefore be it, resolve that the bid received by, for aviation maintenance technician training Learjet aircraft, that's quite a title, in accordance with the specifications be awarded to Langley Aviation LLC out of Miami, Florida in the amount of $105,000.
Is there a second?
Second, Angela.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? That motion carries.
I continue with resolution number 2023-13. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas various computers and computer labs on campus are in need of upgrades and replacement. And whereas funds for the computer upgrades and replacements are available through the college fund balance, and whereas appropriate bids will be created and posted to comply with the college's procurement policy, now therefore be it, resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the purchase of computers through the college fund balance in amount not to exceed $250,000.
Is there a second?
Second, Ebis.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, guys.
In my last resolution, 2023-14, I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas the college seeks to enter into agreements with Economic Modeling LLC, Lightcast, to provide an economic impact study, a program demand gap analysis, and a subscription for Career Coach and Career Coach Widget Builder. And whereas Lightcast has been determined to be a sole source provider of the aforementioned services, and whereas funding is available from the SUNY Revitalization Funds, now therefore be it, resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the college to enter into an agreement, into the agreements, with Economic Modeling LLC in the amount not to exceed $80,410 as a sole source provider.
Is there a second?
Second, Ebis.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I just want to add that we have not done this since I was first appointed. I believe the first year that I joined the Board, we had just had the economic impact statement made for what the college can actually do in terms of stimulating the local economy. We also had the program debt demand gap analysis, which showed where there were demands in industries, that we needed to maybe create some new programs or new courses, et cetera. And this is a really, really valuable undertaking to me, because it's going to show us where we are in terms of what the needs are with our local workforce and all our leaders. So if there's no other comments, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? That motion carries unanimously as well. Thank you, Sheila. Last item under committee reports is personal on committee relations chaired by Vice Chair Angela Fleslin.
Thank you. I offer a resolution 2023-15 and move its adoption. Whereas in accordance with Article 9 of the Agreement between Dutchess County and the Civil Service Employees Association, Incorporated, the President of Dutchess Community College charging party preferred charges of misconduct against employee number A XXXX1803 employee dated July 19th, 2022. The Board of Trustees Board appointed the hearing officer, Ira Lobel, to render an advisory opinion after conducting a disciplinary hearing on the charges. By letter dated September 15th, 2022, the employee was notified that a disciplinary hearing pursuant to Section 75 of the Civil Service Law would be held on October 3rd, 2022. The employee informed the charging party that she would not appear at the disciplinary hearing. The hearing was held on October 3rd, 2022, at which time the hearing officer heard testimony and received evidence presented by the charging party. The charging party and the employees submitted legal briefs to the hearing officer in support of their respective positions. The burden for proving misconduct is on the charging party. The Board has reviewed the record in this matter, including the transcript of the hearing, the exhibits introduced into evidence at the hearing, the respective legal briefs submitted by the charging party and the employee, and the report and recommendations of the hearing officer. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board hereby adopts the findings and recommendation in the report and recommendation of the hearing officer, including the determination that the employee is guilty of the charges of misconduct and specifications 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, and determines that the hearing officer's recommendation of the finding of guilt is based upon substantial evidence in the record. And that the Board concludes that the penalty of dismissal from service effective immediately is the appropriate sanction and adopts the hearing officer's penalty recommendation for the reasons set forth within the report and recommendation. And be it further resolved that the Board hereby directs the President of Dutchess Community College or his designee to take whatever steps are necessary to inform the employee of its determination and to file the necessary documents with the Dutchess County Department of Civil Service. Is there a second?
Second, Sheila.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? That motion carries unanimously as well. Thank you, Angela. The next item was reported to student trustee, Amina.
Hello. All right, so this is, this is going to be a fairly lengthy report, and I'll try to speak slowly, so you can all take everything. All right. So first, past student activity events. Black Student Union hosted a cultural night in the residence hall to celebrate Black history and excellence with food and music. Club Fair was on February 2nd. We did Stuff a Plush, which is kind of like our version of Build a Bear, on February 7th. Valentine's Day Flower Sale on February 14th. And in Conklin Hall, we had Snow Day events on the snow day that we had hosted by all of the RAs, SFDAs, and FDAs. A study session at 1:00 AM, sledding in the snow at 1:30, hot cocoa and marshmallows at 2:00 PM, Just Dance at 4:00, and a movie night at 6:00. So future student activities will be a, God bless, a free chair massage on March 8th. Originally scheduled for March 8th, but unfortunately, the masseuse got a little sick, but they will be back and we will be blessed. Learn to Swing Dance on March 9th. Bagels and Bio on March 9th as well with Professor Condon, if my memory serves me correct, I believe so. Distress and Coping Skills on March 9th as well. Horror Appreciation Club is showing Velocit Pastor, I believe it's what it's called, on March 9th. A lot of them are March 9th events. And the last day of the DCC Foundation Scholarships Workshop is also on March 9th. The New York City trip is going to be Saturday, March 11th. And Film Society is showing Blade Runner on March 17th. Congratulations to the men's basketball team. They are going to Nationals. Yay. Moving on to SGA meeting and meetings and updates from January to March. Duchess's Dance Company was approved. Horror Appreciation Society was approved. On January 31st, SGA Senate and E-Board members signed up to be on the LGBTQ+ Training Subcommittee that I've been talking about since forever. So things are happening. I'm very excited. Today, the activity fee resolution was voted on and approved in SGA. Student Activities is looking to increase the fee to $7.50 next year, then $10, $10 the year afterwards. Reasons being, reason being, clubs, activities, and athletics are returning. This resolution will soon, if not already, be brought up to the Board, not just me sharing it. Today, SGA members also signed up for the 10 seats available at the Foundation Gala. We are very grateful and excited to attend. A good amount of members wanted to share their thanks and appreciation to, you know, the people or person who funded that. We're very excited. Finally, elections will start for the new E-Board March 14th. I should be able to share the results with you all at May's trustee meeting. And finally, well, not finally, there's still more, sorry. Conklin Hall Governments Meetings and Updates. Hall Gov hosted a Super Bowl watch party with food catered by Chart Wells. It was great. Speaking of Chart Wells, the members of Hall, of good amount of members of Hall Gov had a very productive meeting with Sean Herdina, Director of Dining Services, and Adriana Greco about student concerns regarding Chart Wells services and meal plans. Two of the biggest changes that we are expecting to see, actually have already come out since our meeting, was little vegetable cups, yay, and more dorm-friendly meals. So that's really cool. And my task currently are seeing the LGBTQ+ training for staff and faculty executed properly and hopefully in a timely manner. There is probably more, but this is the most important things that I could not forget to mention today. Are there any questions?
Can I just add, Michael Dupree is the one that bought your tickets.
Thank you!
Sheila Pell has donated her tickets to faculty.
Thank you all so much.
You're welcome. And it's important to me that student government leaders in particular get to participate in basically what boils down to being maybe your first networking event, because that's what seats are like. And you've had that opportunity already, just being up here and talking to people, et cetera, and being a representative of the students throughout the campus. But you also get to dance. Just remember that. That's what's fun, is you get to dance. Any other questions for trustee Augustin Mohammed? No. By the way, Amina, I love your reports, your enthusiasm, everything. Did I hear horror appreciation? Is that like scary movies, bloody?
Scary movies, TV shows, and books.
Okay.
They're very happy.
This is why, this is why in movies, horror films are making such a big resurgence right now, because young people, for whatever reason, are loving them.
Yeah.
To form a society to do this sounds really fantastic to me. So if there are other questions, thank you again. The next item on the agenda is my report, and I'll try to speak quickly as well, so we can get Sheila out of here quickly. Human Resources is now offering retirement presentations to anyone interested in exploring what it'll take to help them retire. This is a new service. Thank you, Mark. Esports equipment has been mentioned already. It's now being used for matches. There are new teams that are still forming. And Matthew Paquette, our athletic director, plans to invite local high school esports teams to campus to compete in our state-of-the-art esports arena, which we're hoping will help with enrollment, as well as just that sense of camaraderie that our students are better than those high school students. Enrollment Management, F1 Visa International student, Havon Turner, graduated in January 2023, has been accepted as a transfer student to University of Albany for the 2023-2024 academic year, is a recipient of the Dean of International Education Excellence Award in the amount of $9,000. Congratulations, Mr. Turner. We're going to have one of the largest groups of graduating students in the EOP Trio Programs with approximately 70 in total. These graduating classes that are large will allow us to recruit more heavily to fill slots for the fall, for Fall 2023, because there's already an increase, significant increase in application, including those students referred to DCC by SUNY New Paltz. Last under this section, Miguel Arias, former Marine Crewmaster, former DCC student, and current Math Center Professional Tutor and Computer Science Instructor, has been accepted into the National Test Pilot School. The NTPS School is considered widely the best test pilot school in the world. Miguel starts in June. Congratulations to him. The Counseling Center is one of eight SUNY schools partnering with the Christie Campus Health to offer 24/7 crisis counseling and a wellness hub. That's a mobile experience for students. Christie Campus Health partners with colleges to help meet mental health needs of students, where the students are and when they need it. That means, again, 24/7. Our anticipated launch is March 2023. Couple of other students who've done something great. Criminal Justice student Kalen Garcia was recognized this month by being awarded the New York State Sheriff's Institute Criminal Justice Scholarship. Werner Steger, who's the head of our union and professor of history, or head of DO, I should say, edited Leo Rabufo's The Limits of Moderation, Jimmy Carter, and the Ironies of American Liberalism, which is going to be published by Greenview Press. With other historians, Dr. Steger will be participating in a symposium on the book in April at George Washington University in Washington, DC. Tina Karen, an assistant librarian, has been accepted into the 2023 Communities of Practice for the Advancement of Library Instruction Institute. That's called COPOLI. This will allow Tina to bring her skills to other librarians as they develop new evidence-based information literacy instruction methods, curriculum, and workshops. We're excited that she's been accepted into this program, because it's going to allow us to continue to advance our information literacy instruction at DCC as well. As has been mentioned, DCC was very proud to welcome SUNY Chancellor John King on February 9th. Thanks to all the trustees, they got to show up there and meet with him. He's a great guy. Thanks to all the students who participated in the lively back and forth. All faculty that were able to, again, participate in a lively back and forth with him. This ended at a press conference at the DCC at Hetchinville Region Airport, which was really exciting, because he was able to announce that we were getting more monies. I think Dr. Jordan will be going through that as well. We were also granted, we were awarded a grant of $435,000 from the Empire State Development Corporation to support the implementation of the new Mechatronics and Workforce Development Labs at DCC at Fishkill. This is going to fund the ITT and computer equipment, furniture, and other capital components necessary to support the infrastructure to complete this project. We also got a $50,000 incentive award from the Education Design Labs. This will be used to support the design implementation of three new micro pathways or micro credentials over the next year and years of business construction and IT. Last, I just wanted to mention quickly that we did have our retreat. It was our first planned annual retreat for our bylaws, where we focused on the basics of trustee duties and leadership, also on emerging trends and issues facing community colleges in the near future, in areas where trustees felt they needed more information about the college. Dr. Sherlene Dukes was our moderator, and we thank her and Locust Grove for hosting us. And I want to thank all the trustees for your patience and diligence, both the night before and the day of. I know I got a lot out of it, and I hope you all did too. Any questions? There being none. Peter, it's your report now.
So I want to begin by thanking all of the trustees as well for participating, taking the time out of your busy schedules to participate in the board retreat. It was a wonderful opportunity for me to meet with you in an environment that wasn't this. And so that's, that's great. So thank you for taking the time. I'm going to ask Susan Rogers, because we are running out of time before our Middle States visit, April 16th to 19th, to give you a brief update on the Middle States upcoming visit and to give you a gift.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Jordan. I think they actually already have the gift. We provided the printed report. As Dr. Jordan said, we are fine, happy, out from visit. So it is just, just all systems go right now. But we are very excited. We submitted the final report and uploaded every piece of evidence to the Middle States portal by March 1st. Over 400 pieces of evidence were uploaded. And as I've said many times before, this has been a huge team project across campus. So we, even though we come here and give the reports, right, I never want to be remiss from saying how many people have really contributed to all of this. So right now, we are looking ahead to the visit. The visiting team will arrive on April 16th Sunday. We will be hosting reception dinner at the airport here at the HVR, how do you say? DCC at HVR Airport, which all of you will be invited to. We'll also be setting up on the 17th or the 18th of April, a session for all board members who are able to attend and meet with the team as a group. We'll know a little bit more about the final itinerary from the team chair, hopefully within the next week. As we finalize, all these details, we'll be providing updates. It will certainly be available at the next Board of Trustees meeting as well for any questions that you might have about the written report that you have before you.
Thank you, Susan. What Susan didn't say is the amount of information that we uploaded to the portal for Middle States caused it to crash. I'm taking responsibility for that, Susan. But we missed our deadline, because the system went down and was down for a few days. But in good fashion, and just like our home team, they came back and met that new deadline ahead of schedule. So we are all set. I also want to share that February was a month for me of meeting with elected officials. We hosted here at DCC in this very room Congressman Pat Ryan's first Veterans and Military Families Advisory Council that happened in February. It was great to have him on campus. I also had the opportunity together with Ron Hicks, Albert Cousins, who is the superintendent for Reinbeck School District, Jason Shetlick of Dutchess BOCES, and Dwight Bonk from Wapins School District, to meet with the Lieutenant Governor in February to talk to him about work that is happening here in Dutchess County through the EDAC, the Economic Development Advisory Council, and specifically the work of the Workforce and Education Committee. So that was a good meeting. It was informational, an informational meeting for him to bring him up to speed. I was also fortunate to be in the president, in the presence of or state Senator Schumer at the press conference and ribbon cutting for unsemi conductors in East Fishkill, right? Not, the East Fishkill. And that was a really pleasant morning of activities. And finally, a group of us went down to White Plains at the invitation of the governor's office to hear her announce proposals in her next budget that will greatly impact the Hudson Valley region. Everything from housing to education, mental health, and infrastructure. So it was great to be able to have conversations with such powerful individuals who are really proud of what community colleges do and looking forward to helping us at DCC and in the Hudson Valley. So, Mr. Chairman, that's the extent of my report.
Are there any questions for Dr. Jordan? The next item on the agenda is other business. Does anybody have any other business or items for future agenda?
Just a comment. I'm not a big social media buff, but I do go out there enough, and I take the time to look for what's happening at DCC and seeing all the great things done by the students, the faculty, and the administration and, okay. And like, I think it's my phone?
Your phone.
No.
Sorry.
And just acknowledge the amazing work that's going on here. So I encourage those of you, even if you're just about done at the end of the day, like I am, of just staring at screens or having meetings and being on technology, it's important for us to show our solidarity here to the amazing work that's being done by so many. And so very proud to be representing DCC and to see all the amazing things that are going on. So for all of you that are leaders and to our students at large, please bring back our congratulations, and we'll continue to like and repost and celebrate the amazing things happening here at DCC.
That is very well said, Sheila, and that segues beautifully to what I wanted to say, which is that for those in the audience, even though it seems like this goes really quickly now up here, I want to salute my colleagues, all the faculty, all the staff who make us, make this happen, because this information is now filtered to us through the committees. Everyone gets a chance to share in these things over and over again, and it makes it much more smoothly running up here now. So it's not as though we're just here and doing it fast, I promise, because there are a lot of people here who've spent up here, spent lots of hours, both on campus and on Zooms, zooming about campus, et cetera, and that included our retreat. So thank you, colleagues, and also thanks to everybody who's part of this great community. The next meeting will be March 28th, 2023. Please note, that is our last Board of Trustees meeting before Middle States is here. So if you can make it here that day, remember to have, bring lots of notes, so we can have lots of good things to say to the Middle States accreditation team. And if there's nothing else, then may I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Sheila.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you, media team, for all the live streaming.